Ask for the roll call.
Member Lawrence.
Member Calhoun present?
Member Barry present?
Member Mead present. And member Camiso is, will be slightly late and is on its way. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and be knowledgeable and permissible. One more piece of housekeeping. The Planning Board general rules: The Planning Board reserves the right to administer ults, summon witnesses, call for the production of papers, cross-examine any person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess, limit debate, inspect the subject, site, or buildings during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearing for cause. The audit of business will be announced by the Chair. Any questions will be directed to the Chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand for recognition from the Chair. When recognized, please state your name and address, specific interest in the proceedings, and special credentials if any pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing matter. Hearing is being started for it and taped for public record. Planning Board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. Cross-examination between parties and interests or other person will be permitted only after due recognition from the Chair. All documents, papers, plans that are introduced in the hearing shall be clearly identified by name by some other designation, and the person so introducing them shall also be identified by name and address. A planning board exhibit letter will be assigned to each submittal unless the submittal has been specifically identified by the exhibit letter. When excerpts from case law are cited, the complete text of the finding shall be furnished to the Planning Board within 14 days. And the only other thing that I'd add is I'd just ask anyone who has cellphone or pages just to turn them off. First item, first item of the Planning Board minutes from, I think everybody just got them tonight, from July 13th and then August 24th. I give the Board an opportunity to peruse the minutes from the 13th of July, and then it entertain a motion to accept. Prefer a motion to accept the minutes from the July 13th?
Ooh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd ask the Board to review the August 24th minutes. On that, I'd ask for a motion to accept.
I'll make motion bar and comment from my phone.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the 500. The continuing public hearing for 500 Commander Shay Boulevard FedEx site land special permit planning location 2015-50. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Eric Solomon, 90, Quincy Shore Drive, apartment 711. Pursuant to the rules and regulations of the special permit under section 1A, they're required to have the public meeting within 65 days. They far exceeded that within hundreds of days now by continuing to continue this motion. I don't see any acceptable reason why we should grant this continuance again in light of them not showing up. I urge the Board to do the right thing and both know on the continuance and thus know on special permit and require them to resubmit if they're required to do it properly and legally if they plan on trying to steal our property values.
Duly noted. Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon did.
Yeah, I do have a, it was a letter. I have a letter from Mr. Solomon, a text, an email, excuse me. Subject is stop FedEx to save North Quincy. Yet again, the scumbags FedEx that are trying to destroy my property values are asking and demanding a continuance of their hearing within only 24 hour notice to the residents of Quincy. This continued violation of the notification rules is unacceptable. The only notice of public hearing was posted in January. While the Board insists on calling it a continuous, no meeting has actually taken place. Furthermore, FedEx did surveys of proposed road construction across my building. Aside from the fact that they appear to be planning to fill in the swamp to widen the road and thus make our buildings more susceptible to flooding, they failed to recognize myself and the rest of the building as a party of interest. Yet another rule violation. As such, I ask the Board to summarily reject FedEx's request for a continuance. They can start the process over if they wish and do the legal right slash legal way. Any approval of a continuance is unacceptable and a mockery of this process. Eric Solomon, 90, Quincy Shore Drive, Quincy, Mass. 02171. Mr. Does the department have application for the Board about what's happening with this application?
We received a notice of continuance from the applicant's attorney this morning.
For the record, the department received a letter that's addressed to me. Please accept this letter as a request to continue the public hearing on the above referenced project scheduled for September to the October Planning Board meeting. The applicant at this time is trying to help resolve road condition for Commander Shay Boulevard. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to discussing our project further with you and the Planning Board. Sincerely, Robert W. Hines.
So I would just add that it is the legal authority of Commander Shay Boulevard easements, that legal review of those documents is my understanding of what's delaying the continuance or this case from coming before the Board. We have received full plans on the proposed FedEx facility, but, you know, big concern for staff and I think the community is the truck movements to and from that facility. So that review continues. I know the mayor's offices has, through the solicitor's office, the solicitor's office has been involved with legal counsel for the applicant and all other interested parties. No resolution has come forward at this time, and I think that's the result of another continuance on this case.
Very, very helpful for my getting comfortable with continuing. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Board members?
Yeah, does the planning department have an opinion on Mr. Solomon's request that we make them refile? Is there some legal requirement that we prefer to have them continue as to refile?
The Board can continue to approve the continuance of this case. It has been properly notified in the beginning. However, I would say that this matter, the time is spinning on this one. And I think it came in originally in June, and we would look for a, possibly a different outcome for the next meeting. You know, possibly withdraw. If it's denied, that would prevent this applicant from filing for two years. I don't think that's in our best interest. If this Board would like to see this project move forward, we should give them the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice, which would allow them to refile. That refiling would essentially reset all of the public notification, two weeks notification, you know, twice, one week out, once, two weeks out, and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. What's the Board's wishes? Okay, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one last comment. It has been since January, not June, that it's going on, so this is nine months, not three. I don't see why we should give them more benefit of the doubt than the residents of Quincy. I'm still pressed for a noted continuance and a rejection of it, and they can apply in two years if they choose to do so. That'd be my final statement, but I thank you guys for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. What's the wish of the Board?
I want a motion to give them additional months of continuance to the October meeting.
A motion made to.
Can we attach a comment to that, that they be told that they have to be ready to go next month or withdraw because of the landfill?
Sure, you can do that.
Mr. Chairman? I just would like to follow up on my email from earlier and recuse myself from any court of votes.
Yeah, duly noted. Okay, a motion's been made to grant it with the condition that they come back to an October meeting and make a presentation. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I just want to mention that October meeting is scheduled for October 19th.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, member Camiso is, said he was going to be detained, probably thought he was going to be here about 20 or 25 minutes late. Thought he'd be here by about 7:30. Understanding that, and then understanding that there'll only be four members to consider the next two applications, we have asked the two applicants if they would like to wait until member Camiso comes here or proceed, and both of them have stated that they would be willing to wait until member Camiso comes. Now, understanding that they're members of the public who are here in this case, so I apologize for the inconvenience, but member Camiso did say that he had a previous commitment, but he would be here by 7:30-ish, okay, and it's not too far from here. So, understanding the willingness on the part of the applicant and the hope for willingness on the part of the public, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna hold the meeting open until member Camiso comes. So feel free to let him, if you got.
Outside.
Yeah. Yeah, you're good, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna pass him around.
We need like a side door to go out here. That's actually where I was in between meetings yesterday, is a little hump over in the back of the graveyard, and you can sit down, other than the people walking.
I'd just, I'd like to go back into session just for one bit of housekeeping. The 500 Commander Shay Boulevard, which we just discussed instead of a continuance date to, doesn't work because we have a member that had to recuse herself, we have a member that is not going to be here on the 19th of October. So we need four members to sit, so, and we advise the, Mr. Solomon, that we're gonna now schedule that continuance to the 9th of November, which will be the November meeting, and we will have a full complement of members. So I just wanted the public to know that. Thank you. We'll go into a brief recess again. Thank you.
Is the only variance you're asking for on this one?
The minimal frontage, basically, for the West Street.
That's not being dealt with here. The Planning Board doesn't deal with variances?
No, I'm just saying, but I mean, that's the problem with that property. Like, that one isn't that dense at all.
No, it's 3,515 per unit. So.
Compared to the other one, no. Like, I almost want to shake this guy's hand for not being so dense.
But resident B category actually increases everything, everything is a product. So it goes from 2,500 to 3,500 to 40,000.
Well, I mean, as long as that guy next door sells some of that land, then.
We actually worked out.
Then, you know, it's okay.
We actually slid the driveway over and worked out the approach. Remember that guy that had the driveway? He wrote us that. That makes it reasonable. We actually slid the driveway over, so we, you know, we went out and did it with the drive-through.
No, well, like I said, it's all about like, if a neighbor doesn't care, then he cares. That's the way I look at it, you know? Just lucky that I'm not the neighbor. But you wouldn't want to be the neighbor either, honestly, you know, in certain situations, you know? Well, let's change it so like we can do it in residential A to let everyone benefit from the density. That's sort of the way I look at it. Well, I'm just saying, though, they do border each other. At some point, it goes from this to this, so I'm saying. So, I mean, in Foresight in 2012, I would've like bought all of C properties, because that seems to be valid. But you know what I was thinking too? I think the Russians were hacking the email. They're saying, how did they know about those properties? That was on 10:30 today.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And that's how they got it, so I can believe that.
I'd like to sing a song now.
You get paid per hour though, pretty much, don't you? Or you take me by the jaw, don't you? So, I'm helping you.
Well, it's still tough.
But you're paid well though.
Yeah. Not as good as real estate brokers. Real estate brokers.
I would say probably. This case, you'll make probably more off these guys than all my creatures in the entire year. The developer's a figure that actually do the math, which I mean, you know, go back and thinking, starters like. Well. Well, the builder too is making some money because they're kind of like a temporary person. They're kind of get paid and then they're out of the project. Whether it fails or not, it's all there.
But there's a misnomer, a misbelief, and everybody's walking away with huge profits. Yes, the more risk you take. I don't think it was a rat.
I think they're all cat pup.
I know down in Mel Street, Great Tree.
So, Patrick, you need to write a story saying how they need to have, like, six or seven members on the planning board, so we don't have incidents like this for the four people that are here. Well, the reason is, they need.
They put, like, one piece of the curve. I think that's each week is special. So there was a little bit of that, driving to the transfer stations, and off the transfer rotary. There is.
Get a sticker, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Part of the trash.
There was a revolt there, they almost, like, turned their whole more selective institute. They had, like, the page and prose thing, the theater. Twenty, every time you're out, it's like, most of the time, you know, stickers of the badge. But they tried to.
Continuing the agenda, the next item is continued public hearing for the 264 West Street Site Plan slash Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-05 continues from the August 24, 2016 meeting. The applicant representative here.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Members of the board, for the record, Edward Fleming on behalf of Stephen Bayless, property LLC. As the board, where we were here last time, before the board, actually, previous to the continuance of this matter, when we made presentation, the full presentation of the proposal. Since that time, during that time, in that meeting, a neighbor, a budding neighbor raised legitimate concerns about an encroachment that existed, as in the right way that was utilized for access to this site, encroached on his driveway, or his driveway, I should say, encroached on the right way. Regardless of whose responsibility it was to move or relocate their driveway, Mr. Bayless requested a continuance that night, and met with he and his counsel, Brian Conley. Stephen Conley is the neighbor, Brian Conley was the attorney that represented him. And we had lengthy discussions, meetings at the site with the parties, in the effort to resolve the concerns about the encroachment. And what resulted from that, those meetings, is that the driveway was shifted away from Mr. Conley's property. We had, at the time, the ability, because the driveway or the right way was 20 feet in total width, so we had the ability to shift the driveway over and modify the driveway in such a fashion that we could eliminate, or safely eliminate, the encroachment that Mr. Conley's driveway had on this easement. And by doing so, we also eliminated a concern that Member Glenn had raised about the removal of a telephone pole and relocation of a telephone pole on the front entrance way. By shifting the driveway over and modifying the driveway accordingly, there was no need to remove that telephone pole. So that eliminated costs to Mr. Bayless, but also any interruption in his service for other neighbors in the community. It did not impact in any other way the proposal as it was made to you that night. In fact, the drainage has been reviewed, again, by peer review, who's here tonight, who can speak to the fact that the driveway changes will not, did not impact the drainage in any manner. And therefore, we're comfortable that it didn't impact the proposal in any way. In fact, since that time, a letter was submitted to this body, to the department, by the fire department, who again reviewed the driveway to ensure that there was safe and appropriate egress to the site, and they again indicated that they were comfortable with the egress. So I do have a letter that was submitted to me, or provided to me, by Brian Conley, signed by Stephen Conley, indicating that he was withdrawing his objection, indicating that Mr. Bayless worked in good faith, attempt to address his concerns about the proposed project at 264 West Street. And I'd like to submit that, if I may, for the board's record. So we certainly can certainly make any additional presentations if the board feels necessary. I know I've been working very closely with Mr. Stevens and the planning department to ensure that all of that issues were appropriately addressed, and I know that Mr. Stevens is prepared tonight to make a recommendation, but if Mr. Chairman, members, if you'd like, any additional presentations, anything.
Any questions to the applicant? Okay, it is a continued public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Sir, step up, introduce yourself.
My candidate, seventeen, I've been in Quincy since 81, and you never saw these kind of projects back then. I just don't see how you go into single-family neighborhoods, you take down a one house, and you put up eight units with 12 cars. I don't see how that's good for the future of Quincy. That's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishes to speak? Anyone else wishes to speak? Anyone else wishes to speak? Anybody who does not want to speak, but wants to be recorded, there are sheets on the window over here. Not hearing it, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Stevens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This case is before you for under Site Plan Review Only, under Section 9.5.1. I would like to point out to the board that there is a pending application sitting before the zoning board detailing floor area ratio, lot area for dwelling unit, and frontage requirements, as well as the number of units. That zoning board meeting has been continued to September 27. With that out of the way, this project has been reviewed by the independent peer review firm, Wooded and Current. Their last report for this case was issued on July 11th of this year. I would say to Attorney Fleming's comments about adjustments to the driveway, those were forwarded to Wooded and Current for review, and no further comments came of that review. He was satisfied. This project was also reviewed by the city's engineering department, health department, and traffic engineer. With that, we believe, because this is only Site Plan Review, that I could recommend to this board to move forward with the recommendation for approval.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
Okay. We have worked on some conditions for that approval, and I'd be more than happy to share them now.
Please.
Condition one, the planning board's site plan approval is contingent upon the zoning board of appeal approval of the applicant's variance application. Number two, the applicant shall adhere to the requirements of the city's tree ordinance. Number three, the applicant shall provide the planning department with a copy of all related easement documents, showing that the applicant has the legal rights to access the site as proposed. Number four, prior to any building permits being issued, the applicant will perform a water flow test with the city's water department. Number five, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permit and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works. Number six, the applicant shall be responsible for replacing any city signage that is removed during construction. Prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide a list of signage to be replaced with pictures and location on a map to the city traffic engineer. Number seven, it is crucial that any activities proposed for this development not cause rodent problems for butters. Prior to obtaining a demolition or building permit, the applicant must submit a rodent control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval at least 10 days prior to any site activities. Rodent control practices must continue through the duration of the construction phase of this project. Number eight, the applicant shall develop a dust control plan to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations, and shall commit to conformance with both local and state regulations regarding noise, since this project is within a residential neighborhood and construction could generate noise generating activities. Number nine, the applicant shall submit a pre-demolition survey to the Health Department for any potential asbestos-containing materials to be conducted by a licensed, DLI-certified inspector. If asbestos-containing materials is present, it must be removed by that licensed contractor, and a post-abatement inspection must be performed by a DLI-certified project monitor. Number 10, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the traffic engineer for review and approval at the same time that a building permit application is submitted for review by the Inspeccional Services Department. Review of the construction management plan will take a minimum of two weeks. The construction management plan shall include, but is not limited to, the following items: traffic management plan for any sidewalk replacement, curb ramps, and utility construction; truck route for deliveries to and from the highway; truck access to the site; construction signage; construction work hours and days; hours, days for deliveries; erosion control plan; a schedule of work being done on-site and off-site, and the overall length of construction; location of construction, fencing and gate on the plan with crushed stone apron; traffic management plan for utility work; the detour route for vehicles, if needed; the route for pedestrians, including any ADA requirements, signage, and safety requirements; construction site plan for barrier and signage. The following statement should be included in the plan: Quote, "Provide the city's traffic engineering free business days notice that construction will begin," end quote. Provide description of any work being done in the street, and provide a traffic management plan to perform this work for approval by the city's traffic engineer. Condition number 11, provide a description of any work being done in the street, and provide a traffic management plan to perform this work by the city's traffic engineer. Condition number 12, the post-construction operation and maintenance plan for the drywells and all related drainage structures and site maintenance, which includes the ownership and responsible party, shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds as part of the planning board decision. Number 13, the applicant shall submit to the planning board a copy of the recorded condominium association agreement prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. 14, upon completion of this project, the applicant shall submit to the planning board as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights away. Plans shall be submitted in a digital format acceptable to the planning department. And number 15, the hours of construction activities and deliveries of materials is as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday; 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday; and all construction and deliveries shall be prohibited on Sunday unless a different schedule is approved by the chief of police. That's the end of the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions, the board? Motion?
Motion to approve the Site Plan Review, according to the conditions just provided by Mr. Stevens.
Do a second to that motion.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Post? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the continued public hearing for 661-665 and 671 Washington Street. Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-09, which was continued from the August 24, 2016. Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, members of the board, Edward Fleming on behalf of Jumbo Self-Storage. Again, this is a continued matter. Last time we were before this board, we made full presentation of the proposal, and specifically discussed and shared with the board significant measures that were taken to improve the architectural elements of the building. Architecture was a key issue of concern of the board and also of the department, specifically as a gateway to the project in the city. We made that full presentation, and since that time, we've had further discussions with the department about conditions that were important to the department and to this board, ensuring that all of the issues related to the peer review had been appropriately addressed. So we're confident and comfortable that we've done so. I've had discussions with Mr. Stevens, who I know is prepared to make a recommendation tonight. That's, we don't have any additional information to provide to the board at this time, although we're certainly caring.
Any questions of Mr. Fleming?
I do.
Go ahead.
Bit of a business question. What is the occupancy rate that they intend to run at, once they get up and running? Eighty percent of units rented, sixty percent.
Standard occupancy rate for the buildings, like, projected at ninety, the top companies are running about ninety-five. So projected at ninety percent, and indicating that many of the top companies are up to nine to five percent.
Okay, so typical for similar businesses operating around here, they're running at ninety plus.
In the nineties.
Very helpful, thank you.
Except for the new one. The new self-storage that we've built. It takes about four years to fill up.
Takes four years?
Yeah. I think what was reported last time, if I remember correctly, was about seventy-five percent occupancy as of this date, so it's only been, I think, a couple of years that that building's been open. So it's a seventy-five percent. And extra space actually maintains, I believe, many of the facilities, many of the storage facilities in the city. So they certainly see a demand far as they continue to purchase these storage facilities. Thank you.
Any other comments on board?
I'd like to read an email that was received by the department, which, Dear Chairman and Members of the Board, unfortunately, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting due to conflict with my day job. I wanted to provide some thoughts regarding the application for a storage facility located at 671 Washington Street. Some residents have shared with me that the storage facility is not the most optimal use for the property. On some level, I agree. However, I'm always aware that in a zoned industrial area, you're subject to a lot more undesirable business models coming into your neighborhood, other than a self-storage facility. Self-storage businesses typically attract a low volume of traffic, which is something to seriously consider, given the already high volume of traffic along the car. In addition, I believe that the investment into the area will be needed, will be a needed update to the dilapidated boatyard that is currently there. The agreed-upon landscape plan should enhance the aesthetic view along Washington Street. I also appreciate the applicant for making several noticeable architectural enhancements to the plan. Please keep in mind that I think it would be helpful to have a conversation regarding signage. This may be something you look to in condition, to look to condition within the permit. Thank you, Brad Crowe, Counsel.
Sure. Come on up.
Building 613. I don't agree with your numbers here, how many, you know, how much is occupied. That other building, I went over there, it's not even a quarter full. It's got nine hundred units in it. It's been there two years, and not even a quarter full. It's like, why do you need another one? That one's not even full yet. The other thing, the traffic, I drive a truck, I go by there twice a day, and I lived here. And the traffic, they say there's not going to be a problem with traffic, but excuse me, but there is. You know, any car, you know, any time of the day that wants to go into that spot, it's going to get rear-ended at fifty-five miles an hour, because that's how fast the cars go, from one light, the light right before them, to the road. I know, anybody that drives in Quincy can tell you how fast the cars go in the street. Sun was hit a couple of weeks ago on Washington Street, right in front of our Willys on the street. There is a traffic problem. And also, we're not hearing anything about them, and there's nothing else to say. I wouldn't hear what they have to say about drainage. You open up that ground, you don't even know what's under it. They don't even want to test it. I don't hear anything about the EPA. Anyone else coming to test that ground? You open up that parking lot, that's had a flat top on it, it's draining into the river all these years. Where's the water going to go? Where's the water going to go? Back towards us. What are they going to do to protect my property when they dig up that ground? They going to put something down to keep water from going in my living room? Because it's a townhouse, and the living room's in the basement. What are they going to do for that? I don't hear nothing about the drainage. They had a two-page letter, Mr. Fleming, from the engineer in front of me, about the problems that they have to correct about their drainage system. And what, the engineer didn't like it? You got a letter from?
I'll send it to us.
Well, we haven't heard anything. You don't talk about any of that. What are you going to do? What are you going to do about a lot of things when you start building there? You know, and the boatyard? The boatyard's going to still be there. You know, they say it's got, they're getting rid of it now. They only took acre and a half, or six and a half acres. So, to say the boatyard's gone, it's still going to be, it's going to be right in front of the building. Right when you come over the bridge, you see the boats, and you see the building. They're the last thing you see. Then you see our houses. So, I think the numbers here and what they have to say about the occupancy for years, they ain't going to fill up a thousand seventy-five units. I'm sorry, we already have enough self-storage in Quincy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think you may be interested to hear a peer reviewer of some of his comments. Mr. White? Sorry, I didn't mean to. Obviously, I had you speak first, Jim.
Good evening. My name is Jim White. I'm an engineer from H.W. Moore Associates. We performed three peer reviews on this project. Initial peer review was on June 16th. We issued a peer review. We commented on a number of issues, including utilities, storm drainage, site layout, handicap compliance, sewer water pipes. New plans were issued. We found a second peer review. At that point, almost all comments were adequately addressed. We did issue our second peer review in August 12th, and it was revised from, which addressed all of our comments. The proposed project will comply with all the P-stormwater management requirements. It will mitigate peak flow of stormwater off the site, but also remove eighty percent of, or more than eighty percent of total suspended solids. The stormwater should perform a site close to an existing piping system underneath the boatyard out to the eastward direction. We've asked them to survey, multiple serials, that pipe to ensure that it's in good condition prior to, during construction of the project. We're confident the storm drainage system will work adequately on this project. We made two recommendations for the project. One was, you know, taking stormwater, the stormwater piping system is probably approved of the project. And the second one was to consider increasing the radius of the curb off Washington Street to help traffic movements to the site a little easier. And that's hoping one of the conditions to be approved, that they're putting that with the city. As a matter of fact, we're going to go down that side and make sure that's all right. Thank you.
Any questions on board? Ms. White?
Is there, so, does the peer review address any concerns, environmental concerns?
We did not review the environmental concerns. They did submit information on that. You know, the site was in old gas state. We did not, but we do not have expectation that we're still going to have to deal with.
I'm concerned about, you know, what could be there outside relative to land paint, certainly for the boatyard, or, like you said, the previously petroleum facility, so...
If I may add that, there was a 21E done on the site.
Okay.
And that 21E report has been provided to the department for their review, and there's a condition within the decision that there'll be further monitoring of soils during the construction process, and that E report that the E P has deemed appropriate.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? I'm sorry. Sir?
Yeah. On this testing of the ground, we talked about a gas station that was closed down twenty years ago. They're talking about the boatyard, where the shipyard was on for a hundred years. That's the land that needs to be tested, not this testing from a gas station that's been closed down for twenty years. That's been gone for twenty years. So, you have further testing, they go monitoring. They haven't tested the ground where the boatyard is.
Yes, we did.
They did?
We did.
That's my non-environmental opinion. Anyone else wants to speak? Let me go back to the board. Any other questions on the board?
I just have one, and it deals with the caliber of the trees. I think you've got to increase the caliber of those trees. They'll go over in a minor windstorm. I think they need to be bigger. I think they need to be, I don't know. What are you expecting now for the caliber of those? Too much caliber? We're happy to increase the caliber of trees for that, for those conditions.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
For me, happy to increase the caliber of trees. Is this your approval?
Well, I spoke, I spoke with the department about this as well, and certainly there's an interest in responding to the concerns of the department to ensure that the caliber is appropriate. The goal was to have really dramatically improved landscaping. So, we'll increase the caliber of the trees to what the department thinks is reasonable. I think we talked about four-inch caliber trees.
Or four and a half?
That's acceptable.
I'd like to see it go to five, five and a half, but that's just me. Anybody else wishes to speak? Please, come on up. Identify yourself.
My name is Ivy Gower, six persons of eight unit board. It's been very interesting to you. But when, on the DPW, when I first got there, I was getting these amazing amounts of water bills. So, I went down there, it took me forever, sitting in front of the woman that underneath the head of the DPW. And first, I found the place, and then I goes, I don't have a washing machine. So, this went on, and I was getting like percentages on the, on the taxes. And so, what happened was, where they, when you're in, they, on the O-DUP, and you got eighteen ninety-six, and the thing came up like that, and then they, so they just overwent them. But it took a long time, and then they, they put down one that read weeds up to a satellite, but it took like, first, they wouldn't let them into like, you know, dark days, like, you know, they looked up on the, and the, the wall sign to go down to the tree track. When I read about the water, they're going to like go in between everybody's property to get to the main water, if I'm not mistaken, on South Street, connect to the main pipes. Because I had an awful time with the DPW. I was, you know, these people seem like, it's like just a snap. I was like, not a bad time. We sat there and talked about why and everything. I says, no, really? You're really good. And then I got an abatement, abatement, abatement. But it's going to run along, it's a correct of my thinking that they're going to dig along all side, because there is no, there is no connecting water to the main water pipes, which I don't know what years they go back to. And then on the one, Washington Street, the South Street, just kind of wondering about that. They are going to go between, did I read that correctly? When I saw the did-dow, 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 they go between properties, and they dig, and they connect onto the, onto the main water pipe. Is that how they do it?
I assume they're coming over east.
They're going to be, there is, there is no water source here, because they have to come right over to the, they have to dig up every, in between everybody's property and water pipes. That's a lot of digging.
Gas station.
Lot of digging. But what I read, what I could figure out, I started yelling out the did-dow, did-dow, I went, I'll go in between every property and dig out and connect onto the main thing. And I sat there forever trying to connect that, you know. GPW has increased their potentials and so, a lot of abatement, so, that's all I need to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Or wishes to be recorded? Who hasn't spoken? Okay, since there isn't anyone else wishing to speak, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Come on. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and board members. I have here a recommendation. You did hear from the peer reviewer that this project was reviewed, and there was a significant back and forth with this project, and the applicant has satisfied the department and the review to this point. This case is a threefer, it's three special permits. It's under section 3.1.3, major non-residential use, under 5.1.1.7 parking waiver, and 5.3.1.3. I am prepared to make an affirmative recommendation on all three. I'd be happy to entertain any questions on the department's recommendation from the board members pertaining to each one of those realms.
Why don't you go?
Okay. I have a series of conditions, I think, to the public comments. We try to ensure that, you know, that the public will be protected by the development of this building. So, in my recommendation for approval, the first condition, number one, prior to the start of construction and after the completion of the project, the applicant shall have the existing sewer main and downstream stormwater drain pipes on Reed Avenue and associated manholes inspected using a video camera and tested for integrity. Results of these inspections shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for their review, and the applicant shall be responsible for any upgrades needed to the existing infrastructure as a result of any recommendations made by the DPW. Number two, the applicant will pursue a larger curb radius with the city's Department of Public Works prior to the start of construction in order to create an access that can better accommodate large trucks. Condition number three, there shall be no outside storage or rental of vehicles, large equipment, storage pods, or other similar containers allowed at this site. The applicant has indicated that only sales of items associated with moving and storage will be conducted within the building. Number four, the applicant shall submit a copy of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Permit, commonly referred to as NIPDs, as required by the EPA, to the planning department or its files. I'm going to pause right there. My next condition deals with existing trees. Part of the conversation, a minimum of four-inch caliper. I could add it to this condition if the board so chooses, so. Number five, there have been three trees identified along the western property line of the site that are over eight-inch caliper trees. These trees are to remain in place. Any variation from this plan shall require the approval of the city tree ward. Number six, it was agreed that the location of this project is a gateway to the city of Quincy. The planning board is sensitive to the impact of the building on the landscape of the area. The planning board has agreed to a particular architectural design of the building. No substantial deviations from the approved architectural design shall be allowed without the approval of the planning board. During the building permit application review or the construction phase, any minor modifications that arise may be approved by both the Director of Inspeccional Services and the Planning Director. Number seven, the applicant has submitted a Phase One environmental site assessment and Phase Two site investigative reports. Based on the concentrations of contaminants of concerns, or COCs, identified in these reports, the applicant shall be responsible for preparing a soil management plan to outline on-site soil management procedures during construction, and the requirements for testing and off-site reuse if ill material is to be removed from the site. In addition, they will complete an on-site screening during soil excavation in order to confirm disturbed soils does not appear significantly more impacted than indicated in the Phase Two SI results. A copy of the soil management plan shall be submitted to the planning department and to the Department of Health prior to any land disturbance activities. Provided that the special permit on signage is issued under 5.3.13 for the proposed wall signs, the applicant shall submit to the Director of Inspeccional Services for approval final signed detailed plan or plans and specifications. The applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permits, stormwater management permit, and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works. Number 10, the city of Quincy may, at its discretion, use consultants to supplement city staff for, but not limited to, the purpose of construction observation. The cost of these services shall be paid for by the applicant from the peer review escrow account through the planning department. The escrow account shall be funded to fifty percent of the original peer review fee of fifteen thousand dollars thirty days prior to any land disturbance activities. Number 11, it is crucial that any activities proposed for this development not cause rodent problems for abutters. Prior to obtaining a demolition or building permits, the applicant must submit a rodent control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval at least ten days prior to any site activities. Rodent control practices must continue for the duration of the construction phase of this project. Number 12, the applicant shall develop a dust control plan to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number 13, the applicant shall commit to conformance with both local and state regulations regarding noise since this project is within a residential neighborhood and construction could create noise generating activities. The applicant shall submit a pre-demolition survey to the Health Department for any potential asbestos-containing materials to be conducted by a licensed, DLI-certified inspector. If asbestos-containing materials is present, it must be removed by a licensed contractor, and a post-abatement inspection must be performed by a DLI-certified project monitor. Number 15, the applicant shall submit a formal letter and revised plan with the final plan set that details the internal vehicular traffic signs and their location. Number 16, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the traffic engineer for review and approval at the same time that the building permit application is submitted for review by the Inspeccional Services Department. Review of the construction management plan will take a minimum of two weeks. Number 17, the construction management plan shall include but is not limited to the following items: Provide a description of any work being done in the street and provide traffic management plan to perform this work for approval by the city's traffic engineer. Traffic management plans for any sidewalk replacement, curb, ramps, and utility construction; truck routes for deliveries to and from the highway with appropriate hours and days of delivery; construction signage; construction work hours and days; erosion control plan including construction entrance and fencing; schedule of work being done on-site and off-site with regards to traffic-related items; location of construction fencing and gate on the plan with crushed stone apron; length of construction; the detour route for vehicles if needed; the route for pedestrians, including any ADA requirements, signage, and safety requirements; construction site plan for barrier and signage. And the following statement should be included in the plan: Quote, "Provide the city's traffic engineer three business days notice that construction will begin," end quote. Number 18, the post-construction operations and maintenance manual plan for the drywells and all related drainage structures and site maintenance, which includes the ownership and responsible party, shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds as part of the planning board decision. Number 19, upon completion of this project, the applicant shall submit to the city engineering office and planning department as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights away. Plans shall be submitted in a digital, digital format acceptable to the city engineering office and planning department. Number 20, the hours for construction activities will be as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday; 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday; and all construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless a different schedule is approved by the chief of police. That's the end of my conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Board members, any questions? I would ask, and I go back to the probably more appropriate in condition number five, we were talking about the trees that are already there, but like the assertion of all new trees shall be a minimum of four to four-and-a-half inch caliper trees, subject to the department's approval. And under nine, which presently reads, the applicant shall be required to obtain all necessary sewer connection permits. sewer connection permits, stormwater management permit, and street opening permit from the Department of Public Works prior to the approval of a building permit," which may be SOP, but.
All right, those changes will be made.
Any other, any other comments? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the conditions written in the record and as enhanced by the chair.
Give a second to the motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Votes? In and out.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, since there is no other new business, the whole business, our next meeting is the 19th of October. I think they're circulating, everybody has had an opportunity to sign, great. And stand a motion to adjourn. Thank you all.